Good evening, Pitt County residents. We're happy to have the people in the audience and those out in the community via television. I'd like to welcome all of you to this meeting tonight. We shall have the vote. Madam Clerk? I pushed it, mine won't work.
Everyone is in attendance.
Thank you. We have a full attendance. We'll come to order. We have invocation by Commissioner. Hold on one.
Please welcome my pastor at Oakdale Church, Pastor Mike Atkins, please.
Pastor Mac Atkins, please. Thank you.
Thank you for having me, Board. Let's pray. Jesus, we thank you so much for this evening. We thank you so much for your grace and your mercy. It's clearly evident here. And so, God, tonight, we ask that you would be with every board member, that you would be with every person in this room, and that you would have your way. Tonight, God, we yield to all that you want to do. Teach us to be better listeners tonight than speakers, that we would, together in this room, deal with integrity, indecency, and in order. Thank you so much for all of those as you've placed in authority. And we recognize you as authority tonight, and we honor those in authority among us tonight. We thank you for giving us insight, wisdom, and revelation knowledge to be able to serve the people of this county in this local body in the way that would honor you. We thank you for it, in Jesus' name. And everybody say, "Amen."
Amen. Please stand. I'd like to welcome, I was young resident of the evening from DH Conley High School. Please join the podium. Please introduce yourself to us, the members of the Board and the audience.
Good evening. I'm Jerry Barajas. I'm in 11th grade at DH Conley High School, and I'm currently the junior vice president of our student government. Thank you for having me this evening at this time. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
Thank you.
Thank you, and have a great evening.
We will now have a motion to approve the agenda.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move to approve the agenda with the exception that we remove item one under items for report.
Second. We have a motion from Commissioner Nunley that we remove item number one, and it was seconded by Commissioner Smith. Madam Clerk?
Motion passed unanimously.
The motion passes. The next thing on agenda is public address. Madam Clerk? I mean, Madam Manager.
Yes, we have one person signed up to speak this evening, Tanya Foreman from CARE. And while she's coming up, if the attorney would please read the statement.
Pitt County welcomes all comments on matters of public concern. Each person will be allowed up to three minutes to speak. A total of 30 minutes is set aside for public addresses to the Board. Please state your name and address prior to speaking.
Good evening, Miss Foreman. The podium is yours.
How are you all doing? You said name and address? Okay. My name is Tanya Foreman, and my address is 2508 Brookfield Drive. Am I okay to speak? Can you all hear me clearly?
I was about to tell you, could you raise the mic and maybe since you are the only one at the podium, pull your mask off so that the people in the public out in there.
All right. Thank you, Mary. Can you all hear me now?
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Good evening, you all. My name is Tanya Foreman. As stated, I am the founder of CARE, which is a local nonprofit organization. We have come before you tonight to ask for a sense of urgency in addressing the housing crisis in our community. The face of homelessness is changing from the stereotypical individuals in our community that we think are wandering aimlessly and may have drug or drinking issues. Over the past year, because of the unjust rental rate increases in our community, the face of housing insecurity is now families, often afraid of losing their children, senior citizens, and working-class citizens. These are people who work and pay their rent on time and live responsibly, but they cannot respond to unjust rent increases and unrealistic timelines. Thus, they are finding themselves literally out in the cold. My organization has been addressing this issue since last May. It started with two apartment complexes. The first displacing 70 families immediately. Now, there have been more than eight apartment complexes that we are aware of personally, and I know that there are more. In addition to that, I have confirmed just today through our school counselors that our school system has 152 families in unstable housing situations right now. This includes people that are sleeping in their vehicles, staying in hotels, or couch Something has to be done. Our default setting is to say, "Let's check with the shelter," but it has been shown over the last several months that our shelter is not able to handle the need and has not been accepting families at the moment. Not to mention, there needs to be a reset in the delivery of services to the recent change in demographics of people that are finding themselves in this housing insecurity and homeless situations. While I could share more in this timeline of three minutes only tonight, what we want to focus on is our immediate needs. There are organizations in the community that are assisting with depositing first month's rent, but we have a supply and demand issue, as well as a deficit in affordable housing options. For that reason, our most immediate need is transitional housing, emergency response during extreme weather, and policies that protect our community. And this is from people that are purchasing apartment complexes, usually investors. They are raising the rent significantly, oftentimes doubling it, and people have to go or sign a new lease within 30 days. If they don't have anywhere to go and they do not sign that lease, and they decide to stay month-to-month, they are taxed additionally, usually $200 to $300. We cannot afford to ignore this. I want to say that I have had some good meetings with Janice, with Lynn, James Rhodes, as well as our city manager, our city housing director, our new director of DSS, who has promised us that she will not be putting people out and taking their children because they're poor.
Ms. Foreman?
Yes.
The time has expired.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. But what we need is a greater sense of urgency. We need everyone in the community involved, aware, and informed, and we need all hands on deck, including our elected officials. So that's why we're here speaking with you all tonight.
Thank you so very much. We'll take it under advisement. Is there anyone in the audience who would like, who didn't get a chance to sign in? We have public hearings, but... Thank you. Are you all interested in seeing how many are here for that issue? Please stand. We'd just like to know how many came for that issue. Thank you so very much. We will take it under advisement. Be seated, please.
Good evening, Chairwoman Parkins-Williams, Commissioners and Manager Gallagher.
Good evening.
Tonight, I bring the Board a proposed installment financing agreement on the Sheriff's Administration Building Project. At the October 18, 2021, Commissioners Meeting, the Board approved the Sheriff's Administration Building Project. January 9, 2023, the Board awarded the construction contract to Daniels &amp; Daniels Construction Company. Financial Services requests that the Board to hold a public hearing on the proposed installment finance agreement and afterward approve the finance resolution excepting the win and bid for the borrowing. Financial Services worked with bond counsel and financial advisors to issue a request for proposal seeking financing for the Sheriff's Administration Building Project. We received six bank proposals, and they are listed in your packets. In reviewing these proposals, the proposal from TD Bank stood out as the preferred option because of two factors. One, the low interest rate of 3.55%, and two, it had a callable loan feature at seven-and-a-half years compared to 10 years or greater from other banks. The seven-and-a-half-year callable option allows greater flexibility for the county to either pay off the loan early with savings around $690,000, and removing the lien two-and-a-half years sooner than the nearest bank or the second bank. It's my recommendation that the Board consider a motion to award TD Bank as the lender for the project, adopt the finding resolution, authorize and direct the county manager and the chief financial officer to execute and deliver such documents necessary to accept the proposal of the winning bidder and make application required by the resolution. Chairwoman Parkins-Williams, we are ready for the public hearing.
Members of the audience, members of the Board, we open the public hearings. Is there someone who would like to speak?
There is no one signed up to speak.
Is there anyone who would like to speak on a public hearing for this issue? Then I declare the public hearing closed. Members of the Board?
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I make a motion that we approve the recommendations made tonight.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Ward that we approve it. It was seconded by Commissioner McLawhorn. Thank you. We're ready to vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Items for report. First on the agenda is Mr. Jason Thomas, Eastern Carolina Vocational Research Center.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to come speak to you. And I'm Jason Thomas, Chief Operating Officer at Eastern Carolina Vocational Center, or ECVC. Don't have any slides, nothing formal, just some talking points. I first want to say that ECVC enjoys an excellent and mutually beneficial relationship with Pitt County. The county manager and her staff and our team all agree that that should continue. ECVC is an incredibly diverse organization. We have almost 20 different lines of business, which fall under three general categories. Our primary location on North Green Street is focused on manufacturing, custom packaging, warehousing, and distributing a range of products for the federal and state government, military-based stores, and commercial customers. Our Programs Department places trained, qualified individuals with a disability at businesses throughout Pitt County. Our off-site operations are focused on three Pitt County contracts: custodial service, C&amp;D sorting, and the one I'm here to speak about tonight, recycling. In total, more than 85% of our direct labor employees have some type of significant disability. ECVC has been in the recycling business for almost 50 years and has served Pitt County government's recycling needs for 30 years. Pitt County has been and continues to be an advocate for our mission of employing persons with disabilities. I'm sure that there are multiple reasons that the county and this Board have continued to be an ECVC customer. One of those is that we provide valuable, dependable service at a reasonable price, but we know that we have to still compete for Pitt County's business. Remaining competitive in the recycling industry, however, has become increasingly difficult for us. We're focused on providing jobs. More modern recyclers are focused on highly automated, highly efficient operations with as few employees as possible. Even for them, the economics of recycling can sometimes be challenging. This has certainly been the case for ECVC in recycling for more than a decade. So at the county manager's request, we've performed an exhaustive cost analysis on our recycling business, and we've shared that information with county manager and her staff. Included in that analysis is the cost of a new baler, which is the primary piece of equipment used in recycling. Pitt County owns the baler, and ECVC handles the repairs and maintenance. It's 30 years old. It's near end of life, and as recent events demonstrate, it's increasingly fragile. Commodity prices in the recycling markets are down and have been down more than up in the last decade. That coupled with our operating costs that are out of sync with the rest of the industry creates an unsustainable economic environment for ECVC. In order for ECVC to break even in the recycling business, something that's only happened twice in the last 12 years, Pitt County would need to pay significantly more for recycling service. Even then, it would likely serve as a Band-Aid, given the trends in the recycling market. So the bottom line for us is that ECVC is subsidizing the county's recycling program at a significant loss, significant financial loss. Other parts of our business are subsidizing those losses, which is increasingly difficult. While we know that Pitt County is supportive of our mission, we're at a crossroads with the recycling operation. And with that, I'll hand it over to Mr. Corley.
Good evening, Chairman, Chairwoman, members of the Board. So based on the input that we've received from ECVC, we've had several meetings. We have quarterly meetings with ECVC. We've been doing this for several years now, since the last increase to our tipping fee. We have had meetings quarterly to kind of financially and just look at the whole big picture of where recycling is going. And kind of based on the meetings that we've had with them, as well as conversations with staff, the manager, and some of the team, we feel it's in our best interest to look at other options at this point and put an RFP or a bid process for our recycling services. We've talked to ECVC about, you know, working with their staff if need be to reposition those folks, but we would just like to see where we go from here and see what other opportunities may be out there. So looking for kind of a consensus from the Board tonight to move that direction, if that's the flavor of the Board.
Any member of the Board would like question?
I've served on the Board of ECVC, and certainly I've been aware of this concern for a long time. And I'm certainly happy to hear that communication has been with staff and tried to remedy this, but I'd like to, Madam Chair, in order to make the request an RFP to be brought back to the Board and so that we can further find out which direction is most possible for us to take.
I think I saw some more hands over there. Yes.
So what are you recommending? I'm a little confused. I mean, you're advocating for ECVC, but you're saying it's too expensive and we need another alternative.
Yeah, so in conversation...
How many people at ECVC will be unemployed because of that?
Well, we don't know yet if they are completely out of the picture. We don't know what the true cost of recycling could or should be, so that's one of the things we'll weigh based on those proposals, is the proposals we get in, we then evaluate the pluses and minuses of what those costs are and services are.
Assume you go elsewhere, do other things. How many people at ECVC will be unemployed?
Mr. Coulson, we have 44 employees at our recycling operation today. We have a little bit more than that combined in our two other Pitt County contracts. So we would make every effort to sustain as many of those jobs as possible. I've had conversations with Ms. Gallagher and with her staff about the potential for placement on other county contracts or growing our existing county contracts.
But those are maybes.
Those are maybes, and as is the notion of someone other than ECVC performing recycling. That's a maybe at this point.
Is it fair to say that the employees that you're talking about are handicapped in one shape, way, shape, or form?
So we have more than 75% of our direct labor employees throughout all of ECVC have some type of disability. So that would be the case for the majority of our employees at recycling.
Okay, here's where I'm going with this. And I can't remember the program, but there are things that come before us periodically where we'll put $300,000 to some group, $400,000, and they'll end up helping 12 homes get a new roof, this, that, or the other. And when I look at the administration costs of that, I've never liked those programs because what you get out of it is disproportionate for what's put in, in my opinion. And so here's the thing. How much do you need to become breakeven? How much profitable? We've not seen any numbers. I can't vote on something if I don't understand it better than what's been presented.
So in the RFP process, ECVC would have an opportunity to make an official bid in that process or further fine-tune our numbers. We've shared some initial financial findings with the county manager and her staff, enough so that they feel like it's in the county's interest to consider what else may be out there. And frankly, it's hard for us to argue with that because as much as we want to, and we will always put our mission first, and we have a number of other business lines where we can do that, we're certainly understanding of the opportunity for Pitt County and for the taxpayers to have at least a look at what could potentially be a less expensive option. We don't know if that would be the case. Like I said, we've been involved in recycling for a long time, and with our mission of employing people and most of the industry focused on fully automating, it's kind of hard for us to compete with those types of bids. So we can support the county's position of wanting to see what else may be available.
At the beginning of your presentation, you brought up what you call the binder?
The baler.
Baler. How much is a new one?
In the neighborhood of a million dollars to purchase and install.
And so, in order to be competitive, you would have to have a new baler? Or if you had a new baler with the dire prediction you're talking about with recycling, would that even be worth spending or considering spending money on that?
The baler is probably in the next couple of years, if not sooner, going to be replaced. It's been down for two weeks, which you may be aware of. The county and the city and other parts of Pitt County have not been able to bring us recyclable materials because the key component in our baler has been shipped off to the manufacturer for repairs.
And how much has that taken to repair?
The estimate was about $20,000, of which we expect to pay half, we expect the manufacturer to pay half, because it's, that's a whole other issue, but yeah, we're going to have some significant maintenance costs for that. So that, we expect that to be back online in a week or so, but that baler is 30 years old.
You said it was on its last legs.
It is.
So it could fail tomorrow and be done. If it failed tomorrow, then what happens?
That would be a significant problem for Pitt County and for municipalities within Pitt County and for ECVC, because it would have to be replaced. I would imagine, at least in the short term, there would have to be some other options for recycling.
And if it wasn't replaced?
We can't recycle without the baler.
So then recycling would come to an end.
As far as ECVC at the current location, it would. I would assume the county might look for a stopgap measure.
We would find alternative methods. Matter of fact, right now, we have been looking at alternative methods because of the issue we're in right now.
I could take up an hour on this, but I haven't seen a Plan B. I mean, you're just kind of indicating, well, there is a Plan B. It's been thought of and so on. So how are we to vote on something that we don't know enough about?
So I don't think we're asking...
If I could say, we're not asking you to make a decision on the future of how recycling will be delivered in the county. The motion that was proposed by Commissioner McLawhorn is to allow staff to issue an RFP so that we can explore all of those options and bring back data and recommendations to you. We don't have our recommendations because we don't know what the market would produce at this point, and so we don't have a true comparison. So what we're asking for this evening is a motion to direct staff to release that RFP and bring back the data and recommendations to the Board about the future of recycling in Pitt County.
Well, I'm expecting about a 300-page report. I'm serious. You will not be able to explain all of the things without that.
Well, I really think that the bids will speak for themselves. You will notice, you will see the automation part of it within the bids, and what the Board will have to decide. If we get other bids, not saying we'll get bids, but if we get other bids from other places that have automation, you'll weigh the pricing that they have versus automation versus the prices if they...
I know about the automation, because the company I work for, we actually make components that go in there and stir it up.
But you'll weigh that versus if they submit a bid, what their service is with employees and what their bid price is, then y'all will have ultimately the decision how we move forward from there.
All right.
Commissioner Huggins?
I'm glad the county manager explained more of what we're asking, but I do want to say that the city suspended their recycling this past week because they said of a much-needed maintenance at ECVC. So I'm in favor of the proposal, I mean, the RFP, and see what's happening.
Anyone else on the Board would like to speak before we receive the motion? Okay, then we haven't gotten one as far as I know. Commissioner McLawhorn, your motion?
Yeah, that the staff bring back an RFP so that we can further see the direction that we will go in.
Second for that?
Second.
And before we vote, I must say this, that I'm very proud to serve on that Board, and I'm very proud of what the staff is doing over at ECVC. They are concerned about the lease of these. They are concerned about those individuals who are disabled, handicapped, and that's the heart of the program, and that's my heart. I want to see those individuals with work, and they are putting forth strong effort to maintain that kind of work environment. So I'm very proud of seeing the staff, what they're doing, and I'm very proud to be a part of it.
Madam Clerk, did you get the... I'm sorry, we have a motion on the floor.
Yeah, I just wanted to speak to it and just say that this is, I mean, this situation may not be ideal in the way someone would want to write it down and bring it together and be exactly right, but this is one thing that Pitt County has had for a long time, and I am sure that we can do a lot of things to improve it and help it, but it is absolutely one of the things that I'm as proud of as anything we've got, because we've got people working who have difficulty getting jobs because of this opportunity for them there. And I'd like for us to do everything we could to get it back on its feet and get it moving forward.
Okay.
Does this board understand the motion?
Yes.
Uh, we have a motion on the floor. All in favor. It was second by Commissioner Huggins. All in favor. Let it be known by voting. Working your clickers.
Motion passed unanimously, Ms. Lynch.
Thank you. Food and Nutrition Services update by Director Sharon Rochelle. Welcome to the podium. And she's assisted by Mr. Brian Everett from the Department of Social Services. Who's speaking first?
Good evening, Board of Commissioners. For those who do not know me, I am Sharon Rochelle. I'm the Director of the Pitt County Department of Social Services. And I have Brian Everett with me tonight, who is the Program Administrator for the Income Maintenance part of the department. In your board package, you should have some information in there regarding food and nutrition services, which you may know by the name of food stamps. What has transpired over the last two to three years is during the public health emergency, the federal government, who runs and pretty much mandates the counties to provide this particular service, has provided the recipients of food and nutrition services the full amount allotted by the government. So where it might be based on income, at least through the public health emergency, every got, everyone got the, the most that could be given to any family or individual. What we know now and what would be in your board packets is the letter that was given to us as, and throughout all of North Carolina and the United States, is that the public health emergency and that food stamp allotment will be ending February twenty-eighth. So that means that the people that have gotten the full amount of their food stamp allotment will now be cut back to what they probably should have gotten all along based on their income. This is going to be a huge blow to some folks who have been accustomed to getting the full amount. And what we know to be true that happened during the public health emergency is the inflationary effect of food and buying things for your family. And so it's really gonna hit them very, very hard. I, I want you to be aware of this because I'm sure that you're gonna hear from your constituents that their food stamp allotment has been cut back. I, I don't want you to get that phone call without having some background that this is happening and to be able to answer. It's not, it does not really have anything to do with Pitt County Department of Social Services. This is a program that's fully funded and mandated by the federal government. So we have to march to that tune. And it's, if they had asked me, which they didn't, I would have transitioned people off that amount, but it, it will not be that way. It'll just end and they'll get their allotment according to their income. So I have Brian here tonight in case there were any further questions or you needed some information on how many families or individuals that would affect.
Mr., Commissioner Coulson?
What is the full allotment?
Good evening.
Good evening.
The full allotment is based on the household size. So currently, a household of one, the allotment would be two hundred and eighty-one dollars.
Is that the full allotment?
That's the full allotment.
Okay.
And during the period of March of two thousand twenty through this month, if the individual were, were receiving the full allotment, any household that received the full allotment received an additional ninety-five dollars.
So what's a maximum full allotment?
Two eighty-one for a household of one. A household of two is five hundred and sixteen, seven.
Well, give me the highest number regardless of the number of people.
Well, a household of eight would be sixteen hundred and ninety-one. So it would be two eighty-one plus ninety-five. That was with the supplement. So if they were receiving two eighty-one prior to the supplement, they would continue receiving the two eighty-one.
I see why you're saying that. There might be some people with shock.
So Commissioner Ward?
So basically, it was increased.
Correct. That's correct.
For everyone. And we've gone back to what it was.
We're going back.
Not lower.
Well, we're going back to what they would qualify for based on their income.
Right, which is what we did before the increase.
Correct. Of course, it's been three years. And each year in October, USDA incrementally increases the Food and Nutrition Services allotments. So it wouldn't be based on what they were receiving in March twenty-twenty. Their benefit would be based, once they're reviewed, on what there is, what their income is now.
Now, which would be probably an increase.
And what the current allotment would be. That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. But still less than the supplement.
Right, certainly. Less than the supplement, but more than what they were getting three years ago.
Unless they've had a significant change in income.
In, in income in family.
Correct.
Any more questions?
Madam Chair, just to make it clear for, for the people out in the audience and, and that's listening, they, they will continue to get their allotment, but not the additional amount.
That's correct.
And that's, isn't that a national mandate?
Yes, it is. There were thirty-two states that had continued to request the waiver for the supplements. North Carolina was one of the thirty-two. So it's affecting all of the thirty-two states that were still issuing supplements.
Right. Thank you.
We're moving on to the next item.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for your explanation. The report was received. We have the area transit organizational structure. Cam Coburn?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I was asked to come and give a brief overview of how our transit system is structured. And so I'm gonna give just a few brief slides. Certainly, if you have questions, feel free to stop me at any time during the presentation or at conclusion. Pityary Transit System, we are a community transport system. We are coordinated, which means we serve many different clientele and entities. We are open to all of the general public. We are a demand response, directly operated, coordinated transportation system. And what that means is the client would make their appointment the business day before. By two PM, a schedule is then generated. The manpower that would be needed to build that schedule and the fleet vehicle number would then be calculated. And then we would seek to provide the best and most efficient service the very next business day. We are not a charter system, meaning that we cannot have a vehicle rented out to a group or organization for their own specific purposes. We have to have all of those vehicles in service for the general public and the various agencies that we are in contract with. We do serve as a paratransit unit for the City of Greenville Great Bus System, which means we provide services for clients that may not be able to access bus stops within three, if they live in that three-quarters of a mile geographic distance from a bus stop. We provide those services curb to curb if they have a disability that qualifies them, that a qualifying professional would sign off on, and they are approved through their application system. We also serve different transit needs such as employment, education, elderly and disabled populations. That is a heavy bulk of our, the percentage that we serve. Just a few examples off the top, Council on Aging, Pitt Community College, ECVC, I think it was up here earlier, and many, many others. But those are just some of the examples that readily come to mind. This is our mission statement. It's been in, that mission statement since the seven years that I have served in this role, but I believe longer than that, it's been developed by the Transit Advisory Board and, and staff and approved. And so you see that. This is the administrative chart, so to speak, of the organization. The advisory board consists of fifteen members. Obviously, the citizens and you all would fall at the top of that organizational chart. County Manager, Deputy County Manager, and then the Transit Advisory Board is there in an advisory role. And then there's myself. As I said earlier, we contract with various human service agencies and governmental entities to make sure we provide those transports that I recently had mentioned. We do collect fares for certain transports. Two examples, RGP, which stands for Rural General Public, which is anyone in the general public that wishes to come from the rural areas into the urban district, which is the City of Greenville. And also, they may go from the City of Greenville to the rural district if they choose to for a board-approved fare. Also, we do receive funds that subsidize employment transportation. And we do, we have charged for paratransit fares. Currently, the City of Greenville is operating on a fare free. And so we mirror that as their paratransit agency. We receive transportation program grant funds. We have an administrative grant that is eighty percent federally funded, five percent of the state matches, and then the county is responsible for the fifteen percent local match. And then on our capital, I believe I was just up here a couple of weeks ago, with that process, we have an eighty percent federal with ten percent state match and then ten percent from the local. Those county local matches can come from different methods, but currently, we provide our own through our fund balance. At one time, the county has contributed to that, but at this time, we are self-sustaining. We also receive state funds from the Rural Operating Assistance Program, more commonly known, the acronym is ROP. That application process happened a few months ago. We do help the elderly and disabled with what we call ETAP funds, and those funds are sub-allocated to organizations that go through the application and approval process through, first, our Transit Advisory Board makes recommendations, and then you all, as the governing board, approve those. We do have employment transportation funds and the Rural General Public, and I had touched on that on the last slide. I mentioned myself earlier as the director. We also have one billing clerk and scheduler that is a grant-funded position with the eighty-five and fifteen split that I mentioned from the fifty-three eleven administrative grant. We have a vehicle maintenance driver trainer. She supervises the day-to-day operations of the drivers and the vehicles and make sure that the compliance needs with the federal and state government are met with mileage and wheelchair lifts and oil changes and things, brakes and the things of that nature. We do have two part-time administrative staff that help out an average of twenty hours per week. Drivers, we currently have one full-time driver, FTE, and we have forty-eight, as of the last count, temporary part-time staff that help fill the remaining need. And that number is current, but it does fluctuate based on turnover rates and the demand. We have twenty vehicles, one passenger van and one passenger LTV, and the other eighteen are lift-equipped conversion high-top vehicles, with one of those, the eighteen being an LTV wheelchair equipped. We take requests between nine and two on the weekdays that we are open and Monday through Friday. And that request has to be made by two PM. And then, as I stated earlier, that schedule is built. We do operate Monday through Saturday, generally from seven AM to six PM. We do have some contracted schedule that puts a few vehicles in service earlier. Most of those are for the more critical needs such as dialysis that their chair times are very early in the morning. No Sundays or holidays that are observed by the county. We do have exceptions, again, for the critical dialysis. And we do mirror what the urban paratransit, as their paratransit, what the urban system does. For a few holidays that they are open, we are required to be their mirror for their clients. Just a few accomplishments. Since FY fifteen, we've had a overall forty percent increase in ridership, which is, the demand has created a greater need for operational costs. We have made technological improvements for scheduling and routing with our software that operates more on a indiscriminate algorithm that tries to and seeks to assign the nearest driver to the nearest client as much as reasonably possible. We've put a new camera system in for security and monitoring over at the transit system. And the most federal, recent federal compliance review was one hundred percent with no findings of deficiencies. We will have another one coming up very soon. They have not given me a date yet, but I anticipate it being during this year. And I am open for questions. Yes, sir.
Commissioner Nunn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Kim, for coming in tonight.
Yes, sir.
So when you said you've had an increase of ridership forty percent since fiscal year two thousand fifteen, what would, what is, what would you say your annual load is, individual out of all the categories that you serve in the county?
You mean the greatest, are you speaking of client, like the contracted agency, or do you mean category of certain type of population?
So just say, you know, an RGP, right? How many riders would you have? So, you know, in an airport, we're looking at embarkments, disembarkments. So what would you say? How many calls, how many calls for service do you have, and how many do you perform in a year?
I can get you the exact answer.
That's okay. Just to ask.
But, um, and a good reasonable estimate at this point would be, I'm thinking that they are about twelve percent, maybe, of our overall. We, we seek to.
Oh, no, just overall. Like what, how many, how many people do you serve every year?
We roughly have about fifty to fifty-five thousand trips. That has risen dramatically.
That's, 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 that's what my, I'm sorry. It was not.
No, it's okay.
So, so that's a pretty, forty percent increase. If that's your number now, that's pretty substantial.
Yes, it was about thirty-five, thirty-six thousand trips in that FY fifteen area.
And I just, I think it's important for, for the public to hear that number.
Sure.
Because that is a very, it's a huge increase.
Yes.
And someone's had an eye on it for quite some time. It's great to see that there's real progress being made there. And, and I wanted to give congratulations to you and your department for facilitating ease of, ease of folks in the community getting that, in particular, folks in the rural communities. The, one of the things that I often hear from constituents, however, and, you know, the City of Greenville's no different, is that oftentimes the public transit that's offered, you know, is that traditional nine-to-five time.
Sure.
And so I just would like to see and continue to address, you know, ways that we can find to, to help folks that, that need to work swing shifts and need to work on those off-hours so they're not boxed in, just, just as a general comment, just, but, but on the back end of that. So, but thank you for being here.
Commissioner Huggins?
Thank you. I want to thank you for coming and bringing the organizational structure to us. But I want to ask two questions. What is ETAP?
ETAP.
Okay, what is that?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for asking that. It's Elderly and Disabled Transportation Assistant Program. So if the Council on Aging wanted to apply for some funds to bring their clients for a hot meal and for social interaction, or to take their clients to their heart center, to the cancer center, to dialysis, they would apply for those funds. Once the Transit Advisory Board makes their recommendations, it comes for you all, for your stamp of approval. And then they would receive those funds and use those funds to pay for those transports. That's just one example.
Okay, that, that was what I wanted. And as Commissioner Nunn, they spoke about what, what, what the public would want to know, and what I've always heard is, have, are you doing or have you improved on the, the time that a patient can schedule an appointment and the wait time between that? Has that improved? Because that used to be a real, real problem. Like if the patient had an appointment at nine o'clock for, at the cancer center. 9:00 for, at the cancer center, and, but could not be picked up until 3:00. Have you improved any on that?
You're saying their appointment was at 9:00 a.m. and their pickup was at 3:00 in the afternoon?
To return home.
To trip. So, what, the client has the option, they can schedule an anticipated pickup time, or they can schedule what's called a will call. The federal guidelines say, we really want you to be within an hour. Certainly, there have risen challenges at times, you know, unforeseen weather circumstances, traffic, construction, you know, maybe an, an abundance of lifts that are needed that can certainly delay. I would say overall, to answer your question, yes, we, I think we have made significant strides and improvements, and what we do is we try, when we auto-schedule, is to try to back that up, their priority drop-off or pickup time 15 minutes, because we know that there are going to be situations like that that arise.
Okay. Thank you. I'm glad to hear that you, that's some improvement on that.
Commissioner McLawhorn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I want to say to Kim, that he's been doing a fine job in directing this. I serve on that board also, and, uh, Kim, can you speak a little bit to the relationship, the mutual relationship that you have with the city, the city bus system? I think that this is a concern that some people might want to hear, that's watching this, the, the mutual relationship that the city bus company and, and you all have.
Well, they are, we serve, probably percentage-wise, they are probably our largest client, contracted client, roughly about 30%. That number has gone up significantly since the pandemic. They probably, pre-pandemic, were more around 25%. So, that has risen dramatically. They just got a new director where she came to our last board meeting that the Transit Advisory Board had, so we're still getting to know one another. I'd say it's been a very amicable relationship and...
Commissioner Smith, did you want to speak?
Sure, just a quick question, Cam. The security camera system, is that in the vehicles?
So, the, the one I spoke of in the presentation is the one that's in the building and covers the parking lot.
Do you have them in the vehicles?
We do. That has always been, since I've been there, and, yes, very important, valuable tool.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Mr. Coben, could you make sure we got your slides? Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you for a good report.
Okay, thank you.
We have, next on the agenda is Mr. Sam Coon, monthly, monthly financial report for the general fund and solid waste, next on.
Good evening again, Commissioners. My second item tonight, I bring the December 2022 financial report for the general fund, solid waste fund, and the EMS fund. We are six months into the fiscal year at this point, or 50% of the year. For the general fund, we have collected 58.8% of anticipated revenues and spent 46.4% of budgeted expenditures. Solid waste, we have collected 74.3% and spent 44.6%. EMS, we have collected 58.3% and spent 52.3%. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer the questions at this time.
Commissioner Cosum.
So, you heard earlier about the solid, the recycling. Let's do worst-case scenario, and all recycling has to be terminated. How does that affect the solid waste budget?
Can you answer that?
You don't have to answer that, but now, but it's a, it's not a rhetorical question either. I would like an answer, and I think it needs to be shared with ECDC and, and staff to make sure that we, when, when the report comes to us, we know the full impact.
Commissioner Cosum, that will be absolutely part of the report. We've had a lot of in-depth discussions about the comparison between the tipping fee for regular garbage versus the tipping fee for recycled materials, and then those contaminated recycled materials that get a second fee when they're then taken to garbage. You're almost double paying. And so, that will all be part of the analysis as we compare what ECDC can do most competitively and what the market industry is handling on average, and we'll bring all of that data back to you at that time.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you so much. We need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner McLawhorn to approve. Presentation.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Mr. Russell Heel, December 2022 tax collection report.
Good evening, Chairwoman Perkins-Williams, Commissioners, Madam Manager. This afternoon, I bring to you the December 2022 tax collection report. The Pitt County fiscal year to date, July 1st, 2022 through December 31st, 2022 combined collection rate for real and personal property is 83.09%. The combined rate one year ago for real and personal property was 87.37%. 22 taxes are due on, as of January 5th of '23, and the difference in the year-over-year collection rate is expected to narrow once the January payments have been processed. The Pitt County Tax Administration continues to pursue all outstanding taxes using necessary remedies available through the North Carolina general statutes. It's my recommendation that the board approve the December 2022 tax collection report as presented.
We need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It was motioned by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner McLawhorn. Please move.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We have a report from Mr. Heel on taxes for the year 2022.
Good evening. My second item for report tonight, North Carolina General Statute 105, 396A, requires the tax collector to report to the Board of Commissioners annually on the first Monday in February, the total amount of unpaid taxes for the current fiscal year that are leasings on real property. This report includes data for Pitt County, the EMS district, and other special districts, and the following municipalities: the town of Aiden, the town of Bethel, town of Faulkland, town of Farmville, town of Gronsland, the village of Simpson, and the city of Greenville. A preliminary copy was provided to you as part of your packet, and the final version should have been delivered this afternoon through the day. A list of these leasings have been made available in the manager's office and in the tax collector's office for inspection if anyone wants to. I also have a copy here if the board would want to look through it. It is my recommendation that the Board of Commissioners approve this report as presented.
He's asking for a motion. Madam Chair. Motion by Commissioner Huggins, second by Commissioner Smith. Please move.
Thank you.
We should now hear from our manager.
Yes, I have a few items to report this evening. Your next meeting dates, February 20th at 6:00 p.m. and March 6th at 6:00 p.m. in this room.
One more.
Oh, I'm sorry.
What'd you say? I pushed it. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I heard you. Okay, I'm sorry.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I did press it, but it just didn't come through.
Okay, thanks. Your meeting dates were February 20th and March 6th at 6:00 p.m. in this room. On February 9th of this year, North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services will be conducting a mental health town hall from 5:30 to 8:30 p.m. at the East Carolina Heart Institute. All Commissioners and members of the public are invited to attend to share their thoughts on mental health in the state. Secretary Kinsley and his team will be present for that town hall meeting. On February 9th, will be your final recreation public input session from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Pitt County Agricultural Center. That's a correction to your agenda. The first public input session was at Stokes Elementary School. This one will be at the Pitt County Ag Center for the February 9th, 2023 Recreation Public Input Session at 5:00. On February 10th, there'll be a joint breakfast meeting with this board and the Pitt Community College Board of Trustees from 8:30 to 10:30 in the morning at the Walter Murray Williams Building Conference Room. That will be similar in format to the joint meeting that you had last year with Pitt Community College, as we continue to strengthen our relationship with that educational institution. On February 11th to 14th, those Commissioners who have signed up will attend the NACO Legislative Conference in Washington, D.C. And then my final note is to give you an update on the volunteer expo that you heard about earlier. That occurred on January 28th. It was a Saturday from 8:00 to 1:00. Kimberly Hines, your clerk to the board, and Florida Hardy, Assistant Manager and Human Resources Director, were present and interacted with about 300 attendees that day, where they had an opportunity to share volunteer opportunities within Pitt County government. Special appearances that day by Commissioner Floyd Huggins, Representative Reader, and Senator Don Davis. So, it was a very successful event, and I'm grateful to our staff, who took a Saturday morning of their time to share some of the good things about Pitt County and some volunteer opportunities. That's all that I have.
Do you think it was well worth it?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. We will now have items for consent.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move for acceptance for items for consent.
Motion by Commissioner Ward, and second by... Did I hear a second? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Commissioner McLawhorn.
And, Madam Chair, if I may, I will tender my vote, with the exception of recusing myself from item 18.
Did you catch that, Madam Clerk?
Yes, ma'am. Motion passes unanimously.
Item number 10 for decision. Reappointment to the Pitt County Community Schools and Recreation Advisory Council.
Yes, it is being recommended that Mr. Tony Parker be reappointed to serve another full term that would expire January 1st, 2026.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Nunnely. I'm going to press it hard this time.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. Appointment to the Pitt County Board of Adjustment.
Yes, there are two appointments that need to be made for this item. The first is a motion, it is being recommended that Jack Brock be appointed to a South of the River voting seat. You may recall at a previous meeting, you voted him as an alternate member. Now, there's a permanent spot available, and he would like to be appointed to that South of the River voting seat. In addition, there is a vacancy that was created on the board, and you will need to appoint now an alternate member from the selection of applicants included within your packet.
Do you want that in the form of one motion, or do you want to second?
I think it'll be two.
Okay.
You can do two. Go ahead.
Okay. Well, I move that we appoint Mr. Brock, is that his name?
Second.
Who seconded that?
Tom Cosum.
Oh, Tom Cosum. Motion by Commissioner Huggins, second by Commissioner Cosum. I'm working my clicker.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. All right, we want to fill the alternate vacancy.
Nominate, um, Mary Holdman as alternate.
Commissioner Nunnely recommend that Mary Goldman?
Holdman.
Holdman, second. Second by Commissioner Huggins. I'm working my clicker.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item 11, Commissioners' Comment and Committee Reports. I have...
Who do you start with?
I was waiting for everyone else, but I do have a comment tonight, if you don't mind.
Okay, do you want to start here or start there?
I'll start with you, Commissioner Cosum. You, let's exercise your voice tonight.
No comment, I've said enough.
Okay.
Well, I do have a couple of comments.
Okay.
First of all, I want to acknowledge this, that this is Hart Month. I want to acknowledge this is Black History Month. And I also want to acknowledge the artwork that is downstairs on the wall of the students that participated in NACO's art competition, and I believe all of the students are from Chicago, I believe. So, I don't know what happened to the other schools this year. We had more schools participating than last year. So, I would like to bring to the board, I know we're going to recognize them later, but I would like to ask the board to give them a, a monetary, you know, award, along with the paper, like, $25. I think NACO gives a gift certificate of $50. Is that what they did last year?
Yes.
Yes. So, maybe we could give $25 to, to our students.
Is this how we do it?
So...
You can consider it.
Where would that come from?
I don't know. The manager would find...
I think the board need to vote on that.
Yes, it would vote on it, but, but Commissioner Cosum won't know where would it come from. I'm saying, I'm sure the kind of manager can find, because I think we have six students this year.
Yes.
We've been doing this a long time and have not done this.
We've never given...
For the other students.
Are we setting a precedent?
We never, we've never given them monetary.
No, we haven't. That's what I'm saying, and we've been doing it a long time, you know, so I was just thinking about other students, so.
So, if the board, if the board decides that's something that they want to do, $25, then, if I may answer where the money would come from, or no?
Is, is, is that the motion that you, you made? I didn't hear a second.
Well, what...
I asked, I'm asking Commissioner Huggins.
Yeah, I'll make the motion. That would be my motion.
In order to get us to vote, we need a motion on the floor. Now, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Hugg, uh, motion by Commissioner Huggins, and second by Commissioner Nunnely.
Maybe some discussion.
Okay, we're open for discussion.
Madam Manager, if this were something that we did undertake, where would the funds come from, and would we look also to cap the number of students that we awarded to, given that it would be transitioning to a monetary award?
Yes, so those funds are not currently budgeted. You're talking about probably less than $200 if seven recipients at $25. If, if the board was inclined to cap it at $200, I would need to consult with the finance officer and do an internal budget amendment to pull funds from a line that has unspent funds.
Anyone else?
So, I would make a, with, with Commissioner Floyd Huggins' blessing, I would make an amended motion that this be brought back with a budget amendment at our next meeting in February for consideration before the board.
Well, we have a motion on the floor.
I'm making a substitute motion, and I'll second it.
Okay. Now, we're moving. So, you ready to vote, or is there any more discussion? We will vote on the substitute motion.
I just want to, we're not going, we're just going to vote on...
Bringing it back.
That, that's all we're doing, right?
Yes.
Let's vote.
And while you're bringing that back, is your intent that it would be a budget amendment as an item for decision, rather than a budget amendment, which is typically as consent?
I mean, if there's, if there's any, if there's anyone that might have a reservation for it, I think it probably should be for a decision.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
Okay, I'm fine. We finished voting?
Yes. Motion passes two to seven. Seven to...
You mean seven to two.
Seven to two.
It takes five to pass. The motion passed.
Okay. We'll bring that back at your next meeting.
My other comment, I have a third one. I'd like to, to bring to our attention an article that appeared in the Daily Reflector of January 26th, ECU Help Closing Five Clinics in Behavior Help Unit. And I just want to bring that to, to our attention, that we are the poorest part of the state, and, and when we close health centers... And when we close health centers, wherever they are, in the east, it impacts the citizens. So I would like to have, to ask the manager and ask this Board if we could bring.
Dr. Waldron?
Dr. Waldron or Brian Floyd to us. You want to see Dr. Waldron?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
He's the problem. He's caused this.
Yeah.
He needs to come.
Okay. Come to this Board and bring us information about it.
Madam Chair, Madam Manager, one of the Commissioners is asking under DIAS that you contact Dr. Waldron to address the Board on the issue that was appearing in the page. Do we need a vote for that, Mr. Attorney?
I don't think that requires a vote.
Thank you. So recommend it.
Yes.
Comment at our next meet, if possible.
Yes, and are you wanting Dr. Waldron specifically or if he sends Brian Floyd, the president of the hospital, in order to get before you sooner, would that be acceptable?
It would for me.
He's the one I think.
He didn't call.
Yes, and he has offered to come and speak to the Board if there were questions about it. So, all right, we'll get a representative from ECU Health to come forward with the, with the knowledge that if Dr. Waldron is available, that you would prefer that he attend.
Yes.
Commissioner White?
No comment.
Commissioner McLawhorn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to say I was touched by the comments that Tanya Forman made with the representation that she had, she had here this evening. Madam Manager, I certainly would, if I'm in order to request that the county staff, along with James Rhodes, to look into the housing insecurity and bring back to this Board any kind of recommendation that they see that we might can further discuss this because it is a needed concern, and it is a concern of mine. And it's getting worse and not getting better. So I want to thank Ms. Forman for bringing it to the attention of this Board. And I'd like to make that request, Madam.
Madam Manager, Commissioner McLawhorn would like to have you bring to this Board the issue spoke, brought up in the public input tonight.
Yes, I'd be glad to do that. And we have had very, if I may, productive meetings, I feel like, with Tanya Forman and others, other stakeholders surrounding housing and homelessness issues, including Department of Social Services, City of Greenville, James Rhodes, and others who have the ability to impact, including his Housing and Homelessness Unit, Lynn James. And so I feel like we have made good progress in getting the right folks to the table. Last time, we talked about also incorporating the Greenville Housing Authority to include any input from that end. And I'll also add that at the Managers' Conference last week, I attended two very interesting and informative sessions on innovative ideas throughout the state addressing these issues in other jurisdictions that may very well be applicable from both a policy and practice perspective here in Pitt County and in its municipalities. So we will continue to meet, and I'll be glad to bring a report back to the Board. It may not be by February 20th because I'd want that report to be inclusive of the input from community stakeholders. But as soon as we have an opportunity to make that report without sacrificing the urgency of this issue, I'd be glad to bring that back.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
No comments.
Commissioner Nunley?
No comment.
Commissioner Holdman?
No comment.
Holdman, Holloman.
No comment.
I do have a comment. I attended the training session as a chair for this Board and last week, I guess it was. And we were given three things for homework. One of them, you find at your desk. Each of us received identical manuals for the Commissioner. They suggested that each of us get one so that we are all on the same page with the same kind of understanding. That was one of them. So I asked the clerk when we got back to create this to make sure each of us had identical copies so that we could all be on the same pages for his rules and what we're supposed to be about. So that, that's my first homework that I found to be real easy. Thank you so very much. And at any time you'd like an item to appear on the agenda, please let the clerk or either manager or myself know, and we'll be happy to have it on. This was a long agenda tonight, and we will, I need a motion to go into closed session.
Motion.
Motion by Lauren White, closed session, second by Commissioner McLawhorn. Mr. Attorney?
I'll read the basis. It has been suggested that this body go into closed session under the following grounds, North Carolina General Statute 143, 318.11a6, to discuss a personnel matter, to consult with an attorney employed by the body under North Carolina General Statute 143, 318.11a3, in part to discuss Pitt County versus AmerisourceBergen Drug Corporation et al., and finally, to prevent the disclosure of information that is not considered a public record under North Carolina General Statute 143, 318.10.
Thank you very much. We need to.
May I vote?
Sorry.
Motion passes unanimously.
We ready?
It's just us and the deputy.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would, I would like to tender a motion that we set the Pitt County Register of Deeds salary to $98,911 annually effective next pay period.
I second that motion. And motion by Chris Nunley, second by Beth Boyd. Let's work the clickers. Okay.
Motion passes eight to one.
Okay, we have another motion.
Madam Chair, at this time, I would like to make a motion to approve the closed session minutes from December 19th, 2022.
I second.
Motion by Lauren White, second by Commissioner Lauren White, and second by Commissioner McLawhorn. Let's work the clickers, that we approve the closed sessions.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if you would be certain inclined to receive my motion to adjourn.
Oh, I love, oh, motion to adjourn is non-debated, but we are now adjourned.
Have we got a vote?
Yeah.
Did the clicker?